Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, October 28, 2021. Douglas Plan Board Meeting to order. Time is 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, 7:00 PM, public hearing, continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for special permit, SP-210701, definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms, RC-210701, and it's 7:68, 7:62. Southwest Main Street, possible votes. Do you want to give us an answer on any developments?
Sure. So we did receive a request to continue this hearing to the next meeting. Purpose being that we did receive, excuse me. Right, it's not a plan, I was supposed to put this right. Excuse me one sec. Did receive peer review comments that have not been replied to yet. So absent of those responses from the applicant, it made best sense to request a continuance, which they agreed to.
So plans were submitted to peer review.
Mm-hmm.
Peer review has looked over them?
Correct. I did provide, and I think I circulated it to the group, some... Sorry, getting my projects mixed up. No, it's as simple as that. Simple continuance request.
Were there any issues with that?
No, as long as they submitted some new updated plans. I think that was the big thing. We were waiting on the plans for a while, so I'm okay.
Yeah, there is some progress.
Yeah, I was worried about the no progress, so.
Progress is being made, and they're requesting it to be continued to November 18th Plan Board Meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There are a couple of people in the audience that are here for that project, so.
Hope they're continuing.
Yep. That's what we can do.
Yeah.
Any motion?
As long as the board's happy to continue, that's pretty much what it is.
Yep.
There's also a letter from the abutter. And we just put that in the file.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's in the file.
Any motion there?
So, let's look at this. It's a rough sketch for them to be in for 7:45 on Thursday, the 18th.
Okay. Sweet.
So I'll take the motion to continue.
I just saw it. They've asked for another continuance.
So moved.
November 18th.
Yep.
Yeah, November 18th. They did finally submit some plans, but they haven't gone to peer review yet.
The peer review came back with comments, and they are yet to revise their plans.
Comments, and then hopefully we'll meet for them next meeting.
Can I ask, if you ask, have you considered moving the road to the 30-foot buffer?
No, since they've asked for a continuance, we open the public hearing, and we... Is this your other debt?
Yeah.
Can I say that?
No, this one here, it's in the file.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we don't discuss it if the applicant's not present in. I think it's continued.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue Hawk Hill Farms to November 18th at 7:45.
What time?
7:45.
Any further discussion? Meg, applicant?
Yes.
Oh, you're next here, huh?
Yes. I just wanted to point out that these plans went to the peer review on September 27th. We got them back yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
So there just wasn't, and maybe minutes can reflect that it's not due to anything with our, you know, we're trying to move it along, so we just can't, engineer can't turn it around today.
That's fair enough. Yep, okay.
So motion was made, seconded to continue to be 18th at 7:45. How was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also.
Cool.
All right. So next hearing is at 7:15. Now, is there anything you want to take out of the additional business out of order?
Sure. So we do have a request for a public comment. Typically, a public comment is an item on most agendas, and it is by master and law, something that's allowed. So there is a gentleman here who wishes to discuss an item that's not on the agenda here this evening. I think this would be a good time to do that.
Sure.
Okay. Trying to think of...
My name's Paul. Paul here. This book with... Hang on a second.
It's okay.
My name's Paul here. I'm the builder for the project on the house lot on 54 Manchog Street. I submitted an A&R. On Tuesday. Unfortunately, it wasn't actually on the agenda. The engineer dropped the ball on the timeline.
Aaron is here.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you.
The regatroyer and Silk Credit has...
Joined us.
Joined us online. Thank you.
So the engineer dropped the ball on the timeline to get it in. I have a closing scheduled until the 15th. And if it goes to the 18th, it would be very difficult to meet the closing. That would be extended, would be December before that would actually happen. So I guess I'm just here, I'm kind of in the pickle, and I was hoping the board could help me out with that, take that up. Very, it's a cookie cutter, A&R. I discussed it with Matt this morning, I came to see him, let him explain my case to him and that. And I was hoping the board could take that into consideration, see if he can take it in account.
Good point.
An issue with taking this up?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So we have, it's master and law versus town policy. Master and law doesn't require a public hearing for A&R, as you know. That means there's no advertising in advance. A proponent could in theory bring an A&R right to the meeting. And we have 21 days to endorse it or not endorse it, and you need a good reason not to endorse it. I've reviewed the plans this morning, and there were a couple of minor modifications needed to be made. One of them was to name the street, whether it was public or private. Those changes have been made. It was also, both of lots were called Lot 1, so those have been changed to Lot 1 and Lot 2. Proponent has dropped off the Mylar and those plans here today. So this comes with a caveat from two things in my perspective. Number one, you'll see later in the agenda for director updates. I will be suggesting that we have an A&R policy in the future. But as that stands now, this is compliant with master and law to take this as is as delivered to us today. I did provide the plan in your packet. It's one of the last pages in your packet, just, and I highlighted the lots.
Okay.
So you can see the differences.
And then the fact that our next meeting won't be for those 21 days.
Correct.
So we're, okay. And then the lot in the house looks like it's in the building envelope. It's roughly a 20,000 square foot lot. So, and it's got the correct frontage on Manchog Street.
Before that, board, any objection to taking this up?
No objection. Sorry. No objection. Just because of the 21 days that we would have anyway, so we're not meeting between now and then, so.
And we ran into the holiday with Veterans Day.
Correct, yeah. Same, we only have one meeting in November, so. As long as the lot meets everything that your punch list, that you've gone through, Matt?
It does.
It meets the zoning requirements, it's in the building envelope. I don't see any concerns on my side.
I don't see any either. Just a simple layout.
Yeah. Yeah. Dealt with this all the time. Mike?
Any problem with this, Mike?
No. Okay.
Is there an official A&R number? Like a town number?
Like a case number?
No.
Okay. We have a, we have a...
Street address.
Yes, I have the Mylar here with the amended plans.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to endorse the A&R.
For 54 Manchog Street.
54 Manchog Street.
Motion made by Ernie.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Les. How was in favor?
Aye.
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 There you go.
Aaron, aye online.
There we go.
I'll say, oh, so. Mylar's here.
Yeah. I'd recommend signing after the meeting.
Yep.
So we can slow things down. And I'll have it ready for you to pick up in the morning.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board very much for that. And I, I don't like bringing stuff in like that. That kind of package. Appreciate it.
You had it all together and right, so we can... It's easy for us, it's all set.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, Paul.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, I fully expect the policy to be in front of the board at our next meetings, so we can avoid things like this in the future.
Yeah, it's nothing we can do with the 21-day deal.
Correct.
That's another.
No, it's just a matter of giving me time to review the plans in advance.
Agreed.
To make sure the application is complete.
Maybe potentially have somewhere on the agenda to allow a slot for a public comment to come in. So it is open.
Yep. There we go. Aaron's got video.
So what?
What are you doing?
Go. Video.
All right, so.
Cool.
It's still a little early. Is there anything else? What do you, what's everyone in for?
I'm just here to observe that 7:15.
Is there a certain thing that you're...
On the road, Forest Drive.
Okay. All right, so that was coming up soon. Same with you guys, Forest Drive?
No. What do they call it? Wayansville Estates.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Cool.
Wayansville Estates, so the first one listed there?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Under additional business?
Yeah.
All right, so let's talk about that.
Sure.
Is there anything in the packet for the...
Yes.
Yes, sir. So what we did receive after our conversation today was a...
Punch list.
Punch list for us.
That's cool.
And we were asking if I had anything yet, and that was a no. And then about 20 minutes later, after we spoke, it came in. So that was what the board had asked for. They were debating on whether or not to keep this item on the agenda for the lot release request. And they did give us some updates for what work had been done recently. Ken Fraser is also here, building commissioner, is available to answer any questions as we go. Him and I both reviewed this. It shows substantial progress within the positive, the affirmative. In addition to that, we did also receive a letter, I believe, from the lady who was here today, about concerns about some runoff and stuff. And I understand that you had met with, excuse me, through the chair, you had met with the developer here recently for some, regarding a rain event and the installation of some straw waddles, just to alleviate some of your concern, but...
Not a rain event.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if it's this Tuesday or not. This is more recent.
It's a lot of rain, but this was one specific...
Oh, ma'am, can I just have your name and address, please, just for the record?
Mallory Fulton Eddie, 301 Northwest Fane.
Okay, thank you.
So there's been a lot of rain, like, everywhere this summer. One day, this constant flow from the development down into my land that has never been there before. And then one day, which I didn't bring the date with me, about three weeks ago, I brought my handyman, and I say, can you help me with this? And he shrieked, and it was flowing down very quickly. So I went up to the development and spoke to a Austin, and he was the site manager. He said it had nothing to do with what they were doing. And I said, it's, this has never happened before. I've lived there for 44 years. He did say he thought they could put berms, portable berms, I don't know what they're called.
Straw waddles.
Straw waddles.
Within the next morning, that heavy flow had stopped after I spoke to him. So, and it hadn't been raining for two weeks, so it was not rain. This was, this was water that wasn't supposed to be coming down. So it continues. The water is very heavy. And it dawned on me that for three years, I've been, John Furnell has been helping me with the silt that's coming down the road. It had never been there before, and I was thinking maybe it was from further up. It dawned on me, it's coming down from the development. But no one's complaining. That's my land. No one lives there presently. So John's done a great job in the road, but after every storm, like, what, a day ago? I had to clean the drain, which I try to do all the time, so that the water went down the drain. The silt comes down. So I guess I was trying to ignore it, and I can't ignore it anymore because it's going into my well, into my cellar. And like I said, I've never had this problem in 44 years.
Ken, have you been up?
I'm not doing anything.
Hold on before you interrupt. Ken, have you been up and down this?
I haven't been through the woods from the end of the development down, back down to Southwest Main Street. I know that they've got that pretty well graded. The pictures show pretty much the grading that's done around the three foundations. They haven't yet seeded because they were waiting for Board of Health to sign off on the septic system. And they were telling me by, hopefully, the first of the week, soon as they can get the asphalt done, they were looming and hydroseating that whole back area. I know that they've been maintaining their waddles and their silt fences on the backside of the property. They did in the past three months. I know two episodes where they failed. They went down into the wood line, they cleaned it all up, reestablished the silt in the walls. But I have not personally walked from the back corner of that development down to this lady's property to see what's in the woods itself.
Yeah.
So Jude here at all, or anyone, the project manager?
That's the broom guy? No.
That Austin on the top there?
So nobody's here from Wayansville Estates?
Anyone online from Wayansville, Wayans Reservoir Estates project? I don't think so. So it seems like they're doing a lot of stuff, but lot-specific. Jude has a comment here on the bottom of this letter for road construction.
We do have an agent who's monitoring this.
Okay.
So I think it would be pertinent for us to request their opinion and answer the next meeting prior to releasing any lots.
Yeah, and we can forward the complaint from, what was he at, 301?
301.
Forward that information to him, have him look into that, get an assessment on what's going on with that, and try to alleviate that, and get an update on what's going on. Like, we have a complaint with it. We should get some response from that.
Agree. Agree.
Did we get a written report?
Yeah.
We do.
That's it?
It's by, it's by Robert Pace.
It's by Robert Pace, but we did ask for it from an engineer, did we not?
Yeah, but I know Jude has transferred firms and stuff like that, and he's still active with the project. That's from what I was told, so. Ken, is there, do they need these two lots, four and six released at this time? That's what they're seeking?
Do they need them released now?
Yeah.
I'm sure they want them released as soon as they can get them.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it'd be up to the board's decision whether they want to release them or not. I think they're making substantial progress. I can't, like I said, I can't attest to what's going on in that back corner. I've walked through the woods. I do see a lot of stabilization. I don't know if you guys have the pictures or not, but a lot of stabilization going on. They've been doing what I've been asking them to do with regards to backfilling and everything, and keeping the roadways clear and all that. So, I mean, it is open ground. Unfortunately, they can't close the ground until they get signed off by the Board of Health for their septic system. But their intentions were to get all four, six, and, those are four, 10 and 12, whatever blocks are, get the foundations. Their intent was to get all foundation site work done, all septic system done, all grading, looming, and seeding done before they proceed with any building on those lots.
So they did submit pictures, but there's no pictures of any of the roadway curbing, berming, catch reasons in the roadway. I know that was a big concern of ours with the project going forward.
I have been monitoring that. They have been cleaning the roadway with their machines. I was up there one day. They were running one of the machines up and down the road. I did make a mention that, you know, if you destroy the roads before you put your top loads, you're going to be getting an inspection on the roadway itself. I know they're trying to get it so that they can get all the curbing work done and all the sidewalk work done. And with that, I did make mention, make sure that if you're doing your sidewalk work, you still have three other lots up there, that you're not going to destroy what you put in. So they seem to be moving in a forward, you know, movement. They had problems, I know, with their site contractor that was up there, Rhino. He was doing the work, and then he disappeared, got too busy. They've since got another site contractor up there that's doing the work, and they vowed to stay there until they get this thing taken care of, so.
It's a third contractor.
Sidewalks complete through the chair. Sidewalks complete. Took the ride up a while back, and they weren't...
No. So what they, the last, when I talked to them the last day, they were getting Jude in from, well, our original commander is on his own now, but he's been there for the whole project, so they're going to maintain their contact with him on this project. They were getting him in to do all the engineering and surveying work to make sure everything was in place. They're going to take and rip out all of the K-cord berm that they had put in. That was only temporary, that's the beginning of it.
That'd be a good idea.
Ripping all that out. They're going to be installing the sidewalk rock and the sidewalk asphalt and the new berm work is their next plan to do.
So, I mean, our subdivision rules and regs require that base coat and sidewalks are in before people start living in houses.
Yeah.
So we...
I know.
That's not being addressed.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that was pre-me, you know?
Well, we also expected those to be done. Just through the chair, we...
It's a priority. If they're going to sell lots, there should be sidewalks in front of them and it should be completed at the point.
Yeah.
Well, the properties that they've built to this point, I believe, with the exception of one problem now, are occupied. These three sites that they're working on now are not even sold, from my understanding. So, I mean, you know, I didn't know that reg. I'm just, this is the first I'm hearing of it. I mean, it's something that I can keep an eye on for the board if they want me to, and make sure they don't go forward. And we just won't release it beyond foundation permit only until they get that work done.
Yeah, and I'm fine holding on to these lots, because...
Yeah, till we get these things better.
The ones we released was kind of the, hey, here's, we're giving you to work with, work with us. And so it's kind of like our insurance policy for it. If we can get maybe Doug Bush, who's the town road agent?
Yep.
If we can get him maybe here or a report from him before the next meeting?
That'd be great.
As with what's going on with the road, especially with the concern.
And the abutters issue.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
So we can address the abutters issue, get a report from him. And, I don't know, if Rob was serious about getting his release, I figured he would be here too. Or at least online to answer the questions, so.
Should we get a question in the audience?
Another question?
Can I just say, I'm here too late for my problem? And what I hear is a lot of talk about what can be done, what is being done. But what is coming down too fast on my property now? It has been probably close to a month. And so I'm a little nervous that work is continuing up there. And there should be a huge barrier. There are 14 houses above my house. And a little berm, I've gone and looked at it twice, is not stopping what's coming down. It's maybe the water table underneath. I don't know that part. But I need help immediately, you know?
Well, I think getting, getting through the chair, I think getting Doug Bush out there, who's our road agent, and he can walk the land as well as Ken's going to be in the area.
I couldn't hear everything you said.
Oh, yeah, we've got a road agent, Doug Bush.
Okay.
So he can go out and inspect the site and take a look at this issue as well.
From, he can start at my well. And, right now.
Unfortunately, this is the first time the Plan Board's heard of this, so. So we have to act on what we're hearing now in public from you, so.
Take the steps from there.
Ken?
This is something that just came up this week. This is the first we're hearing of this problem this week. I know I've spoken with Austin also, after he said he met with you and walked in and offered to put some straw waddles around to try and mitigate any walk going through the wall. I'm only going by what he told me. I wasn't there for your conversation, but this is the first we're hearing of it this week. You know, I can go up there, I could probably get up there tomorrow to walk, but I don't know that I'll have any answers for you. I can look at what's going on.
I'll be there. You're welcome.
So I can be up there probably about 9:00 tomorrow, if you'd like.
Thank you for bringing your concern to us. We'd like to stay on top of what's going on up there.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, 7:15 Douglas Development, Sutton Douglas Development, continued application for a preliminary subdivision plan, PRE-2100908, Mumford Street and 5 Forest Street, possible votes. Anything in the packet for this? If you want to bring us up to speed.
Thank you. I understand we do have Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative on the Zoom. I know he's the representative here and plays, works with Wayne Bellick. I believe that's what Mr. Scott is here for. But prior to doing so, and forgive me, board members, if this is something we do or do not know, but we are working with a preliminary subdivision plan here, Form B. Subdivision plans on the preliminary level do not hold true legal standing. If these were approved or denied, it's not something that's recordable. It's not something that's, means that they're going to start building in any regard whatsoever. The purpose of a preliminary plan is purely informational only. It's where a developer would reach out to a board simply for comments, to collect feedback from the board, abutters, prior to filing what's called a definitive plan later on in the process, which would include everything from wetlands to traffic to lot sizes, stormwater management, everything like that. So all the board is responsible for looking at here in these cases is the compliance of our subdivision rules and regs, which calls for like letters A through M, certain things that need to be on the plan. The best way I kind of compare this to is, I was telling Jen about this the other day. It's like the appetizers that they serve at a wedding, but this is like, are we even having a wedding? So they, this is very entry-level, the preliminary subdivisions. Even an approval or denial does not prohibit an applicant from filing a definitive plan at a later date. So this is just informational only. I just want to reiterate that for the folks at home, board members here this evening, and...
So through the chair, just so Matt as well, our preliminary subdivision plans are just public meetings, not public hearings. And the abutters don't have to be notified on a preliminary subdivision plan. It's just a developer-to-the-board discussion.
We do anyway. I think we advertise and go to abutters also.
We did welcome input questions from the neighbors as well. So to Michael Scott is here for...
Yep, CDC or LDC.
Yes, I'm, yes, this is Mike Scott, and also Tim Flynn is present.
Excellent. All right.
I'm the developer on the project.
Yes.
Great, thanks for having us.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do understand that at a previous meeting, there was discussion about waivers. And that's part of the reason that we're here, is I believe the proponents would like to discuss the feasibility of said waivers, and if that's something that the board would entertain.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the piece that we didn't get to the night when they presented. And then they had a long discussion with the abutters in the abutting conference room. So outside of our meeting. So, yeah, we can listen to the waivers.
All right. Who, Michael, you starting or Tim, you going to be starting this off?
I'm going to start in front of me, but if Vince, you feel like going...
Michael, I'll defer to you.
Okay.
Michael, you're on the line here.
I'm sorry?
It's all on you.
Okay, thank you. I presume you have a copy of the August 30th letter with the handful of waivers outlined? I do. I'm going to start right at the top here. So under the preliminary subdivision regulations, there is a requirement to review alternative development scenarios, such as flexible development, some other kinds of low-impact development, et cetera. And it sounds like Wayne, and I apologize if I didn't attend the staff meetings for the primary meeting, but it's my understanding that Wayne met with town staff, so our office, and I believe him attended those meetings, or some of them. And has evaluated, you know, you can see his justification on the right, if you have the leg, that Flint Development has performed research and evaluated proposed program of 31 lots. It's a better suit for the property. And a number of the waivers that followed are related to LID principles, if you will, such as minimization of roadway widths and slightly increasing road grades and whatnot. So there were, you know, LID principles, low-impact design principles proposed. And you don't see this, given the size of the property and the extent, an extensive remaining open space as in any way being a detriment to the, or, you know... as in any way being a detriment to the, or, you know, interrogation of the regulations.
All right. You want to hear it one by one or you want to just go them all?
One by one.
All right.
Thank you, sorry.
Board, any issues with?
Yeah, so you just covered 4 dot 1 dot 4. I'm, okay, what have you covered there? Do you want to go to the next one, streets, 5 dot 1?
All right, next.
Yeah, so the, the next one is, the next few are the streets, section 5-1, specifically 5-1-2, which relates to the width of the right of way. Excuse me, the standard is a 60 foot, but some rights of way can be reduced to 50 foot and, you know, the greater width can also be required. But in this case, you know, it's not a significant development, not significant, it's not a cut through necessarily. There's not hundreds of homes, it's in the 30 range, so the traffic volumes would be relatively low. And as stated, you know, reduction in the lot width, I'm sorry, the roadway width was discussed with staff. It helps to, you know, it still leaves adequate space for utilities, it still leaves adequate space for walkways and plantings should those be required, so feels appropriate, this is, I'm given the scale of the project. Not necessarily the land mass per se, but just the number of lots that are served. That a 50 foot right of way would be sufficient. And I would note that, and I know it's dangerous to say this, but many communities, most communities residential, large residential subdivisions are 50, smaller subdivisions can be as narrow as 40 or even narrower. It's not consistent with standard practice.
Yep, I'm okay with that. Yeah. So the next one's paving width?
Yeah, paving width.
Right, and what I'm seeing here is that you don't have a standard unless it's shown. On a typical section, the letter does note that 24 feet is typical and I don't disagree with that. The request here is to have the through or major longer road, Road A, to be 24 feet and then the two spur roads and to be, and the three spur roads to be 22 feet, which is consistent with the surrounding roads, maybe a little wider than the surrounding roads or the feeder roads to this property. And again, narrowing roadway pavement width is a LID principle, it also serves as a traffic calming measure. Especially, you know, this is not necessarily a long straight stretch of road anywhere, but a combination of terrain and undulating roadways and narrower pavement help reduce speeds and, you know, driver, it increases driver intensity specifically.
Yep, I'm okay with that. I think it's pretty standard stuff and I understand what you mean by like a secondary road or access lane and things like that, so, and to follow the low impact development principles, it's pretty cut and dry.
This is Aaron, if I can through the chair.
Yes, Aaron.
One of, I mean, there's been some talk on our board and especially coming through, if I'm not misunderstanding, Department of Public Works, that one of the uncalming measures is winter and that we do get snow pileup on the sides of the roads and we do have access for delivery of many more vans and trucks than we've ever had in our lives. So I just don't want to see any diminished roadways anywhere because you could have cars coming in opposite directions, snow on either side and a van delivering for Amazon or somebody, so, anyway, that's just my point.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just want to add something, please, thank you. So one of the, one of the stranger things about this is the entrance to the main roadway isn't in town. So depending on the road width for that, with the town of Sutton, we could be tapering a roadway, given whatever they end up requiring on their end with the entryway. So the entrance will be one width that we do not determine, we're just talking about the roads within, within that area. And this seems to be a collection of dead ends with an outlet, perhaps, perhaps, and that depends on that outlet. We'll talk about that at the definitive level, to a different section of road that's more of a private street. So just want to remind the board of that, based on the app.
Yep.
Grade at street intersections?
Sir, this requirement in Douglas is that the cul-de-sac, or the intersection is not exceed 2% for 150 feet for through a cul-de-sac. And in this case, what we're asking for is that Road D, which is the small road out the main road A, that basically creates a, you know, a connector out of the subdivision, that that be allowed to be in excess of the 2%. And likewise, Road B and Road C, which again is a, that's the spur off the main road, that they'd be a little steeper than allowed, than the standard, specifically because of the amount of fill that would be required to bring the road up, specifically Road A, for me to come up in order for Road D to work. So we're not asking for a relief here in or with respect to site distance. It's more a matter of sort of the road grade at a stopping point. And so there's no loss in the overall, you know, I'll call it stopping site safety distances. That wouldn't be something we'd be looking for, but again, it's to try to minimize fills, it goes back to, goes back to the LID measures, trying to keep the roads as close to the natural terrain as possible. That saves, you know, trees, it obviously saves construction costs, but it also, I think, ultimately leaves a better development where it fits the terrain and the more mature vegetation you can leave during construction, the less land disturbance you can do during construction of a roadway is always a good practice.
All right. I think those details, Mr. Chairman, will be hashed out at the definitive level so we know exactly what those grades are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was worried about sightline, but he's mentioned that he covers sightline, but I think, yeah, when we see the definitive, we'll have a better idea, but.
Yeah, if it's safe and it works.
Yep.
Probably, probably can work.
Yeah, I agree.
Sidewalks?
Yeah, this is section, under section six, the required improvements. And again, this would all be, you know, you could, you know, final plan, but the intent here is rather than to have sidewalks on both sides of the road, the proposal is to do a five foot sidewalk on one side of the road and as cited, they would be, or as stated, they would be cited on the northern, western sides of the roads, which, which helps with the, you know, cleaning and maintenance during the winter. It ensures a slightly better opportunity for daytime melting and drying. And in, in place of, you know, Portland cement concrete, the request is to use petunias asphalt. Typically, you would see two to, two and a half inches of asphalt placed, sometimes three. But, you know, certainly the adequate base would be provided and it would be a five foot walk, all ramps and, and intersection crossings would comply with ADA as required. So it's, it's a request to eliminate one side of sidewalk, again, that's a LID measure. It's non-urbanized area where there would be distances on either side that might want to walk and it's not a situation where there's so much traffic that, you know, I'll call it a mid-block crossing or walking from one side of the road to the other, again, with good sightlines is a problem. So, and again, the materials here, New England is a little finicky. You know, concrete can, can work, but with free saw, tree roots and whatnot, you can, it's a lot easier to maintain and expect the durability of pavement to move around with our, our climate.
Question through the chair?
Yes, Lewis.
Mr. Scott, have you looked at the ADA three foot sidewalks with passing lanes as, as part of the LID?
Further reducing the width?
Yeah, there was something that I read recently about the, the LID and looking at three foot sidewalks with passing lanes that still meets the ADA compliance.
So I haven't, I've heard two angles on where ADA was going. One is not to address LID, but to make all sidewalks five feet rather than four feet. And that was going back several years, so maybe they're taking a different look. I was lectured by a DPW director in one community not far from where you are about that potential and wanted it, all the sidewalks to be five rather than four, even though as you state, you can use a narrow, narrow walk. So though I haven't heard that, I know that's permissible in some cases. But I was not aware that they were allowed long run, so of three feet. And I guess two, two other questions would come back and I'm not trying to object to it, don't get me wrong, but one of the other objections that the DPW director had was the ability to get equipment to properly maintain a sidewalk, especially in the winter. You know, with the narrower it gets, the more challenge it is and it goes back in some respects to the snow removal operations.
Yep.
You know, that if snow sloughs back on a five foot sidewalk, it's not the, you know, it still leaves, in his mind, an ADA compliant walk or, and I tend to agree with that, but I haven't heard of the narrower.
Okay. Okay, that's all. We'll go to the one side.
That leaves us with trees.
Ernie's favorite.
Yeah, so last one on the list is the street trees. And section six five talks about trees being planted at 100 foot intervals on both sides of the street and that's certainly reasonable. The request here is that with the intent to keep the road corridor narrow, reduce the width of the right of way, reduce the pavement within it, the, the extent of clearing would be less than, would be the case with the standard and therefore realistically significantly greater number of mature trees are going to survive the construction of the road. Again, a positive thing in many ways, in my opinion. And if that's the case, if trees are saved and there aren't wider squads, you know, the waiver makes sense and then actually the request says that, you know, tree clearing in the steeper sections or the wider sections does occur, then certainly, you know, planting of trees in that area, those areas to the infill would be, you know, welcomed, I think, by the developer and certainly committed to. But overall, it would be, it'd be good to know that the board understands that the intent is to save trees and retain the mature vegetation. And if that's accomplished, then the, the return on that ought to be not to have to install trees or plant trees every 100 feet.
Yeah, I think we've been consistent about.
Yeah, through the chair, but I mean, everybody knows Mike Philly on that. If there are no trees in the grass strip between the sidewalks and the curving.
Yeah, causes us more problems.
I have no problem with anything this way.
Yep. Since he's lost a few memories.
So that one doesn't seem like an issue at all.
Yep. All right, cool.
Is there any other items to discuss on this?
As far as the waivers, I think those were the most pertinent things that needed to be discussed this evening because that helps them move forward with the design of their plan. I apologize I was not here for previous hearings and I'd be curious if, through the chair, if any abutters had comments that are outside of what they've already added to previous meetings.
So you're going to see this additional comments?
It was, it was two, two meetings ago. I think there was limited discussion with the abutters and the developer had a discussion with them in a conference room which we weren't part of.
Okay.
And that's it, it's really a preliminary plan.
Are there folks here for that?
No.
No.
They're just listening. Go through.
Which, which one is that one? So, our, our show, I'm a, I'm a, I'll wear out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, which one was Road A?
What is that, which one is Road A that you consider to be main access?
Uh, Mike, are you able to, if I make you a host, are you able to bring the screen up?
Hopefully.
All right, let me.
Not hearing anything in progress.
I'll do it from here, I'll do it from here.
Okay.
There's, so there's going to be four access.
What was that, the second part?
There's going to be four access points, I think, oh, there used to be three, used to be Conservation Drive, Murphy Road and Duell. Now you're trying to add Forest.
Two. It would be, only be two access points.
Yeah.
What does it do for Murphy Road and Duell Road, well, that's in Sutton actually anyways, that's.
So, Mike, I have two, two questions for you. If you can just highlight Road A, which would be your main road and where your access points are and what streets those are coming off of.
Or are you seeing the screen?
Yep, I am seeing the screen. If you can maybe zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, this, where I might give you vertigo or lose you. So, let's see what that does, if anything, that didn't do a lot.
Yeah.
I know I'm zooming into.
Okay.
Sutton first, but the town line, oh, here's the, the town line runs here.
Yep.
And Road A, the main road, comes in off of Ball.
That's the Duell Road.
Yeah, yeah.
There, yep.
And I'm going to attempt to not lose you here. And continues to the south, ending in cul-de-sac and then what we're calling Road B exits out again, here on Forest. So those are the two points of access and Road A being the, the longest and essentially the feeder road.
Most direct road.
Yes, most direct. And where the project would start from? Yep. Okay.
Does that help you?
Yeah, I was curious, I mean, I, I knew about the 1996 plan where they had Conservation Drive, Murphy Road and Duell Road and they recently bought the Forest Street property, I just, you know, just curious.
All right.
Good.
Any other questions from the audience or comments?
Nope.
One other question, sir.
Yes, Matt.
Sorry. With regards to dead end streets, this is through the chair to Mr. Scott. I understand there's a limit to a dead end road and I just wanted to understand that in your opinion, because there's an access out to Forest Road, does that eliminate these from being called dead end streets?
If you're, if you're asking me, the answer is yes, I mean, this, this would be a dead end road. If you can see my screen still, the lower end of, the southern end of Road A.
Understood.
And then this would be a dead end road, Road C.
Very well.
But there's two means of access, there's, there's actually two means to this. So yeah, we're looking at this cul-de-sac, we're looking at this cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And I think originally there was, this was an emergency or alternative access and that was an early change. Perhaps that three days plan you've seen, Matt.
Okay, thank you. Cool.
All right.
I may have lost you, I'm not hearing the audio.
Oh, it's okay, we hear you.
Yep, we're still here.
Okay, is that, is that clear?
Yeah. I don't think we have any other questions.
Yeah. Is there any other parts of the application for the preliminary to go over or is that everything? They have what they need from us?
Yeah.
All right, so administratively, Mr. Chairman, so I, I mentioned this before, I don't think we should vote on granting waivers today. I think the applicant should just collect the information he's heard here this evening and if the board is inclined to vote, we're only voting to approve or deny the preliminary plan as presented.
Yeah, which doesn't, it's not a full endorsement of the recorded plan, so I don't have a problem with what they brought forward. I think we've reviewed it, allows them to take the next step and they're submitting waivers that we've covered.
You're asking for.
No, we don't have to grant the waivers?
Yeah, I know, but please require the 24 feet of pavement. You're asking for the 22.
So he's going, primary, the, the, the. The main road is going to be 24 foot pavement. Okay, and then the sub.
Cul-de-sacs?
Yeah, the offshoots is going to be 22. It's also for the, also, the, the number of homes you have there is altogether, what, 27 homes?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one homes, yeah. So you're talking a lot more homes there.
Yeah, I mean, in making a comparison to.
Yeah.
Forest Street in one of the, Forest Street, that whole, that, the Con.
Eighteen.
Project we call it, I mean, it was never, it never met rules, any rules or regulations to begin with. It was built by the owner of the property over several years where there probably weren't many rules and regulations anyway. So I just don't want it. The reason we made up these rules and regulations is to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again. So I just want to make sure that they're, they're aware of that. I mean, I'm willing to come down on some roads, but we've spent a lot of years developing these rules and regulations and.
Would you rather?
For the purpose of not cleaning up with. For the purpose of not cleaning up with corn blocks.
What, what road is that coming off of Forest, Michael? Is that Road B? Were you planning for that to be 22 or 20?
This is Road D.
Were you planning for that to be 22 or 24?
Well, I think the request there is, I'm going to find it up, is for 22, yeah. Okay, 24 all the way from the cul-de-sac at the end of A out. This would be 20, this would be 22 of these, this loop and this cul-de-sac would be 22. That's the request.
And you're saying, and you're saying that would be four, four feet to five feet wider than what Forest Street and the existing roads out there are now?
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
It's wider than the feeder road.
So he's just doing that loop?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the preliminary, which also for the audience, it's not, we're not approving this plan, it's not happening 100%, but we're just approving the support of it, what they presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Mumford and 5 Forest Street for the Sutton Douglas Development.
Motion made by Les. Second by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Michael Timothy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you all.
All right. So next would be 7:30 public hearing, Darkstream LLC, application for site plan review, SPR-210923, 116 Davis Street, possible votes.
So new public hearing requires motion open here?
Um, detained a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
...hear it?
No, you, you just, you read the public hearing.
Okay.
And you, you can, you...
Okay, it's good.
Meeting is then open.
All right. So the public hearing notice, name of applicant, Darkstream LLC, name of owner, K9 Realty LLC, date and time of public hearing, Thursday, October 28th at 7:30 PM. Subject of matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting the approval of the Douglas Plan and Board pursuant to the Douglas Zone and Bylaws, Section 9.4, Site Plan Review. Project description, the project consists of redevelopment and existing 12,600 square-foot warehouse building for cultivation of marijuana and associated parking improvements. Project site and location, the project is located at 116 Davis Street, Douglas, Mass. Access map 191, parcel 1. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours at the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. Jake Schulzberg, Vice Chair, Douglas Plan Board. Public hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if you can, just a little intro on this?
Sure. So this, this application, without getting into the details of it right now, is a special permit application form. This, we did receive a request from Dan DeCesaris, project manager for this. They filed their application. They still need a, need some relief from the zoning board of appeals. But it was important that we, because it was advertised, that we at least opened the public hearing. I don't know if there's any representatives here from Darkstream now that would wish to echo this sentiment, but their request was to continue to the meeting in November such that the review by the zoning board for special permit can be completed in advance.
Are you the representative for Darkstream?
No, but I'm texting them right now. Do you want them to call in? There you are, not here.
For the reason they submitted the continuance request.
We can just continue their meeting. I don't think we're ready to review it tonight anyways.
Yeah. Have you had a chance to even look, really look at it?
I have. But if they're not here to represent themselves having requested a continuance, I don't believe it's possible for us to discuss that this evening.
All right.
Uh, do they have a time that they're requesting or a date?
They didn't, just the first, the meeting in November. They wrote first meeting, but we only have one.
11:18.
I have a question. Are they going to be buying and selling pot there or is it a...
We, we're going to discuss that.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, we'll discuss that.
Too early.
Will you look through the application? That's...
It's fresh before us.
Yeah, right.
I suspect that they're cultivating. Cultivating means that they're just going to grow.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to continue them to the November 18th meeting for the eight o'clock slot?
Seven.
Oh, seven o'clock, it's a lot.
Uh, so my motion made by Les to continue the meeting to November 18th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second.
I'll take it from Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Cool.
Motion, uh, meetings continue to be 18th.
Cool. Thank you for the packet and gives us something to read through.
To read it back. All right, next, public hearing, 7:45, public hearing continued. Pinesand and Stone Company, applications for a removal special permit and a water resource protection overlay district, WRPOD, special permit ER-200827, AQ-200827, 39 West Street, possible votes. And it looks like they're looking to continue?
Should we have a time slot?
Do you have a time specific?
Looking to continue to December 9th. See if there's anything.
Okay.
Do you want to write this? You probably have a much better handwriting than me.
Do seven o'clock.
Yep, seven o'clock.
All right. I'll, I'll make the motion to continue Pinesand and Stone Company for their earth removal permit at 39 West Street to December 9th at 7:00?
Motion made by Les.
Second.
Second by Ernie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Continued. 7:57.
We might be back on schedule.
Um, is there something quick in the additional business that we can go over?
Mr. Frager.
Ken. My goodness, Chairman. I just want to let you know that there is a representative here of White Heights. This is Austin.
Aye.
Okay. There's questions that might want to be asked of the board. He is here.
Okay. Well, just to let you know kind of what we discussed and what we're looking for. That's kind of the rundown of it. Well...
Yeah.
Yeah, Les, if you remember.
301 Northwest Main. The property owner came before us regarding some water coming off your site onto her property. So we requested our road inspector to go out and take a look as well as we can, just to see what's going on out there. Maybe look at whatever property needs to be done. If there is water going off the site, maybe implement something. And that's where we stand.
Yeah, I personally walked in. I don't know if you guys...
Well, we're going to have Ken take a look as well as that other person, Doug Bush, who's our, who's our road inspector. So take a look and just see what's going on. She's got a concern, which is valid. It's the first that we've heard of this concern this week. So if you want to be out there tomorrow at 9 o'clock, I think it's 9:30 or so, Ken's going to be out there. And we'll just take a walk and see what's going on. That's all.
And we were concerned with the progress on the sidewalks.
Yep.
With, you know, they're looking to release lots. We saw concerns with the condition of the sidewalks and...
We were kind of, we were kind of promised that the sidewalks were going to be, going forward, be put in, the curbing was going to be done in the August, September timeframe. And so we just want to see if there's an updated schedule, if those things are being shifted out.
Yeah, I believe they're trying to get it done in the next, in the next week. So by next Friday.
If they're done, snap a picture, send it over. So we have, have an update of what's going on. Especially also the road. We had a lot of concerns with the road. So any pictures, developments with the road.
Yeah. I think they're going to try to get everything done, Les, other than the top coat.
Okay, that's fair. So just keep us posted and keep, keep Ken on the loop. He informs us, so.
I don't know. Did they ask for a release on the frames when they finished of the, of the three lots that they started with the foundational permits?
It's been a general, I think, request for the release of lots every time they've come up.
Yeah. I think they're less concerned with the two remaining lots more than continuing on the ones that they started with. Just wrapping up the septic system so those can be stabilized by Monday on 4, 6, and 7 by the end of the week.
Yeah. They think it's, still go forward with what they want to do.
We didn't know if we had to come back in order to start framing or if it wasn't the case.
Let me just ask, as the board, we just discussed that previously. My understanding was the board wanted a full detail of some timelines and timeframes and some progress made to completion for sidewalks and such before release frames on those foundations and to make sure that we had stabilization, whatever was happening to 301 Northwest Main Street, take care of that. So I just want to clarify if that's what the board wants. I can hold a permit on the frames until such a time as that done.
Yeah, it seemed like we were...
And if that's what you want, how would you like to report?
Through the chair?
Yes, Ernie.
I'm not so much opposed to releasing the framing and stuff. I, occupancy permits.
That's a different story. If they're going to sell the house and they're going to have people living in it, it should be a sidewalk in front of it. It's required that sidewalks and the roads be done first before anything else. So...
They're totally in agreement with that. I mean, they're going to be done by Monday.
So I mean, I don't care if you allow them to keep building and moving with the project, but I don't see us granting any applications. Can I request from the board that I get something in writing as to what you guys want to see, that I have something that I have in hand to enforce going forward?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
We may draft something up.
Yeah, I could talk to Matt tomorrow. We could have it drafted up. I mean, the, we could drive, we could take a ride up there and take a look at what's done and what we're looking for. At the end of the day, it's pretty straightforward. We want to address any concerns that are happening with the Butters. We want the, you know, the sidewalks to be in in front of the houses that are there being established, that are being built, and the site to be maintained properly and cleaned up, and as well as the road to be maintained.
Yeah, if I can get that, just give me something in writing on that. And that'll be a form of guidance that I can follow going forward with this development.
But I think we're, we're still holding on to those lots, though.
Correct, the other two as well, plus the other three.
Yeah. Only two lots left or is it three?
There's two lots.
Two, yeah, two that are, haven't been started to work.
Yep.
Three that you're currently activated on, but we haven't released those lots.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah.
So assuming we check all those boxes, he has the discretion to say you can keep going and framing and stuff?
Yes. I think, I think what, yeah, we may look to include is what comes out of the sidewalk at 9 o'clock, make sure that's in the letter as well. So we address those punch items.
Just, just so I have something to put in the permit file.
Like a punch list?
Yeah.
We'll work on that for you.
We'll work on that.
So the, the, the lots you're talking about, Ken, are those four, six, and seven, the ones that they've got the foundations?
Septic's in two or all three?
Septic's, they're expecting two of them tomorrow. The third one should be done by a week from this coming Monday. The last one.
The rest for the releases to start.
What they'll, what they'll look at.
Like I said, as long as the sidewalks and everything before, before occupancy permit goes in, I'm, I'm not opposed to, if they, if they release, if the systems pass tomorrow, start construction, that's fine with me. But it's up to the board.
Okay. We'll get a letter to Ken. Go for that. Just so we document our concerns.
Yeah, it's just to carry that documentation forward, that's all. I'd just like to put something in that permit file.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Go for it from there.
Thank you for coming in. Good to see somebody, a nice old person for a change. Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda, public hearing, Pete's Food Truck, Michael Monaco, application for special permit, SP-2110070. So I have to open this?
Yeah.
All right. Legal notice of public hearing, Douglas Plan and Board. Name of applicant, Darkstream Out.
Oh, there it is.
I'm out.
Hold on.
Sorry, Jake.
They might be in the back page.
The other one.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have the notice?
We might be okay without it. Mr. Chairman, I have some information about this project. So I believe Mike Monaco is here. Okay, great. So Mike and I were talking about this. So first thing I noticed when we got here was this on, this was on our agenda. Unfortunately, well, not, not mattering which way it got here, a food truck's not something the plan of work can regulate. Okay, that's something on wheels. It's not a permanent structure. So we, it's a unique situation. We're looking to occupy a site for an extended period of time every day, which was certainly unique to the point where I could see how it got on here. However, there's a state license for hikers and peddlers. It's already obtained. The way that this would be regulated is through the Board of Health with their inspection and a letter from the Chief of Police, the Police Department regarding where it's going to be located or routes, similar to that of an ice cream shop. Okay, so since this is not a permanent structure, I would recommend that the board consider accepting a withdrawal without prejudice if that, if the, if Mr. Monaco agrees, withdraw without prejudice and to refund the application fees that were paid for this application.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Some of, yeah, we understand. Wrong bucket.
Do you have any issues with that?
No.
All right. Do you have a letter? Do you need a letter?
Yeah, we spoke, but I would want something in writing and we can talk about that offline.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
So entertain a motion to withdraw this application without prejudice and refund money submitted.
The application fee?
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Then we get a written...
Yep.
Withdrawal before it ends.
Sure, just for the record.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Ernie made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Great.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Are you in touch with him?
Yes, sir.
All right.
That's what we call wires getting crossed.
Wait a second.
That's all it was. Yep. Cool. Quite 815.
Uh, you want to talk to us about Flying Goose?
We do not have a decision prepared for that item here today. Obviously, getting my feet wet with everything, it's on the agenda. Do not have time to do that, but I do have 90 days to do so. However, I do intend on having it for the next meeting. I reached out to the folks at Flying Goose today to let them know it was not prepared. So I...
You need minutes?
Calendar?
Um, I have an accessory apartment request.
There we go.
Request for accessory apartment extension for Joseph and Megan Fluschman, AA-030807, 772 Northwest Main Street, possible votes. I know this came in front of us the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And we were just missing the checklist for the application.
Sure. So we didn't, through the chair, we didn't have a checklist for this that we could find anyways. And if it's something we used to use, we couldn't find it. And obviously Jen and I are both pretty new in this role. So Jen created this checklist based off another application. And we've provided for you today. This, this provides the information I believe you were looking for, answers the questions. Just wanted to make sure that you were satisfied with it prior to considering a vote on this matter.
The only thing, I think we usually also look for is the tax, make sure the taxes are...
They're all paid. I believe that was already completed, but I don't think that's here in our packet today.
Is there a way we can get that added to this checklist?
Sure.
I have some of the old checklist at home. I think I can bring one in and...
Hash the two of them together.
Great. That'd be excellent.
I'm okay with this. Accessory apartment.
So we're looking for a motion to grant an extension? If that's the case.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we grant the extension for the special, for the accessory apartment.
772 Northwest Main.
Motion made by Ernie.
Second.
Second by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll sign that at the end.
Just a question to Matt. Is it, one of the things that we've, we've debated, just since we're talking about accessory apartments, one of the things we talked about was the renewal process of a special permit, whatever, three years for an accessory apartment.
Unless it's conditioned, but enforcement and review, how do you know when they're, when they come out for expiration unless the applicant walks in?
I agree. Sometimes you even have a three-year renewal and stuff like that. And then other communities, once you grant a special permit, it's not like it expires.
Right.
So maybe it's a future discussion item on your...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Whiteboard.
Yes.
Plan and Board's schedule. Do we have time to table that until the next meeting with Tracy here?
Yeah, we have a meeting before.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything in the packet anyway.
Yeah, there wasn't anything anyway.
All right. So Tracy should be here for the next meeting. Well... All right, so Tracy should be here for the next meeting. Well, we'll go over that in the next meeting. You want to talk to us, Matt? May I have you down for Director of Community Development Updates, Possible Votes?
Me too. I, I know we do have Wollam Sol around here, but only five minutes before our next item.
Yeah, I wanted to try to get that next item in on time.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. So one of the updates I just want to give you is that there is a coming project regarding a gas station relocation close to 74 Main Street and near the fire department, I'm sure we're very well aware of. There was a request for me to reach out to an engineer for consultant services for test pits witness. This is all before an application or prior to an application that's pending to us, and I authorized a work program for $660 for them to witness the test pits that's going to be taking place on November 3rd. This doesn't require the board to sign off on this or anything. It's just an FYI, so you know that that's happening.
Do you know who's going to be our engineer?
It'll be Corey Broder from Lennard Engineering, whom we've used for other projects. Other things that I'll briefly discuss, just because we have the time. Policy, policy implementation, one of the things I already mentioned was the A and R review policy. There's some things that I hope to have ready for at our next meeting for at least a draft review for us to discuss that. We also have learned that there's a requirement in the general bylaws for us to grant signed permits for flashing or changing signs, okay, on the general bylaw. It just says the plan of work shall issue a permit. Doesn't say what kind of permit, just says a permit. And we typically, the only permit we do, aside from subdivisions and site plan review, is a special permit, but since that has died to a map and lot and needs to be recorded, it doesn't, it isn't something we can do here. So we have to create a policy for this particular signed permit, which will be the first of its kind. So that's something else that we're going to be working on, and I expect an application as such in advance of our next meeting. So this is something we're going to be creating next week. All right, so.
I'm sure any draft.
And this is going to be a policy?
Application or lettering on it, you forward it to us, we need to look at it and get some input on it.
We're going to receive an application at the same time we're reviewing a policy.
So is it a question, it's a policy, so it's not a bylaw changer?
Correct.
On town meeting?
Right.
Your policy?
Correct.
Okay.
It is already a general bylaw for it. It's just a matter of us for how we're going to take these. So we're going to have a public hearing, notify Butters, advertise at public hearing, excuse me, advertise in the publication. And I think we're going to follow those templates anyways. The person who's applying for this is agreeable to those things already, spoke to them today. So we're going to follow some regular templates that we usually do, but we do need a new policy for that also.
Or we need a policy.
We do, we do.
It'll be no, yes.
That's all I have under that item, Mr. Chairman, but there's also our hearing dates for 2022.
We're going to do the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Yeah, Mike as well.
Okay, I did, I added something to that, that you'll see a fourth column that is a deadline for receipt of updated info for continued items. I was hoping to get feedback from you guys on that regard, but that can wait for the next meeting also. So with two minutes to kill, do you want to do actual minutes?
All right, this is the first we've seen them. Mics are, okay, mics are meaning expert minutes.
The first three there are like ancient and missing, I think, but I did have a chance to review September 9th, and I didn't see anything wrong, so. Anybody have a comment on September 9th?
You like the?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for September 9th, 2021. Second.
Motion made by Mike G., second by Ernie. All is in favor?
Right.
Aye.
So that's September 9th.
May 27th, looks good to me. It was a pretty light meeting.
May 27th?
Mike, you good with that one?
I didn't look at it. I didn't see it anywhere, I guess.
It's, it's, it's an older one. I think we've got with the new minutaker.
They're all clipped together.
See what you think.
I've reviewed them grammatically, but as far as content goes, I wasn't here. But grammatically, I'm satisfied with all three of the remaining minutes.
Yeah, I think it's.
Kind of reading, have a memory back then.
Yeah, that's why it's so long ago, but I'm okay with the May 27th.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 27th minutes for 2021.
Second.
Made by Les, second by Ernie. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's May 27th.
I think the 13th I was pretty familiar with, because I think it was, we had a lot of accessory apartments that night. I think I'm okay with the 13th being released as well. The earth removal on Cook Street, yeah.
I have, I'm sorry, I have only one modification on that. It's Town Council, C O U N S E L, and I just caught that now.
Okay.
So that's the only mod I have.
Just seeing, for me, my last name is S C H.
Ah, good one.
Oh, yeah. Drop the C. Yep.
And that's also for the June 24th, too, which.
You're okay on the May.
So.
I seen both.
Two little errors on the May.
That's it.
That's it.
So just going to make a motion to approve, May 13th with the-
Modifications?
Modifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 13th, 2021 minutes with the two errors to be corrected.
Second.
Made by Les, second by Mike G. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
June 24th.
June, I don't think I have the June.
Is it on here? All right, so it is in the agenda.
Okay, yeah, okay. No, I got it.
It's in the packet. It's just one page, so it kind of hides a little bit.
In the attendance, I see two commas back to back. I don't know if a name was in there, got deleted, supposed to be in there, or it's just an extra comma.
Extra comma.
And then my last name is C H.
Yep.
I know, it's a tough name.
You're losing, losing letters.
I wish, I wish it was that easy.
Didn't help you in elementary school.
This looks like a pretty quick meeting.
Yep, yeah, it was pretty quick, dry.
Additional business, business.
Yeah, we're out at eight thirty. Cool. Yeah, we had to sign the stuff, so I'm okay with that. Mike, you good with that? Good with this one? June 24th meeting?
Speak louder.
June, June 24th minute, minutes. You okay with those?
Yeah, but I haven't reviewed them, but I have no objection. If you have.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking them over now. There's nothing here that's concerning to me. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
You good? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the June 24th, 2001 minutes with the minor error from the correction Jake's name.
Seconded by Les, second by Mike G. All is in favor?
Aye.
June.
It's all of them.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Eight nineteen, I have a public hearing for eight fifteen, public hearing continued, McIntyre Loom Incorporated, DEF dash one zero eight one eight, applications for a definitive subdivision plan, Peter Michael Business Park, 100 Davis Street, possible votes.
Good evening, Mark Allen, Allen Engineering and Associates here representing Tom McIntyre, McIntyre Loom.
Tom McIntyre.
Just wanted to bring the board up to speed with where we've been since the last hearing. It's been about a month or so. We were working back and forth with McCarty Engineering. They had issued a comment letter back on October 4th, earlier this month. We did respond to that in writing and issued responses to all of their comments, all seven of their comments, and we also supplied the board with revised drainage analysis and revised site plans or subdivision plans. And I can kind of go through those with you if you'd like. If I could share the screen, we can go through each and every comment, if it's at, if it's at the board's wishes.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, thank you. I, procedurally, I tend to like that idea and that strategy. I think it's important to go through each of those items by line and see what the changes are on the plan as presented by an applicant.
All right.
It's a short list. It's a short punch list. It's only about eight items, eight items or so. I have the PDFs lined up if you want to, let me share the screen.
Sure.
It should be all set, Mark.
Okay.
It's also.
Can we all see that? Oh, now. Okay, so let's pause that. Let's get this to. Yes. So this is the letter that we've supplied the planning board. These are the comment responses to the Peter Michael Business Park that McCarty Engineering issued their letter on October 4th. Item number one, they, they mentioned, as did the Conservation Commission, that the wetland flag numbers were inadvertently left off of the plan, so we have added the wetland flag numbers to the plans. That's comment number one. Comment number two, were the drain manholes, catch basins, and associated piping networks were not labeled on different profile plans, so we added the catch basin manhole pipe networks and added their labels to the plan set. Item number three was that the drop inlet label just west of Station Five plus OO shall be modified. That actual drop inlet was errant, and we've actually deleted it from plan set. It was inadvertently put on in a incorrect location. Item number four was that the drainage basin label should be modified, reference the drainage basin section. We made that change to sheet D two, has been revised. The comment number five was that the vertical granite curb had a mislabeled detail, and we changed that detail to reference letter K. That has also been made to the, to the plan set. Item six was that sheet D one, the typical street cross, cross section details should be modified. We made that modification to be called out as ADS pipe instead of RCP pipe. Item seven is sort of the most, sort of the most influential item of the, of the eight items. That pointed out that the limit of work was shown to be within 25 feet of the nearest wetland flag, and we have since pulled all of the work out of the 25 but no disturb area. We just referenced, I think in our response, that that area had been previously disturbed, but in recognizing the Douglas Conservation Commission's 25 no, just no touch zone, we pulled the area nearest to the drainage basin away from the wetland flag at least 25 feet. The other items that were referenced were the vertical granite curving that was to be extended six feet beyond the tangent lines. We've made that change to the design plans and added that to show that beyond the, the curve of the inlet to the subdivision, that six feet beyond that should be granite curving as well. Stormwater comments, although very boring, I'll kind of highlight here that the, the hydrocat models have been revised for stormwater comments number one. Stormwater comment number two references the, the ground cover curve numbers. Again, it's, it's a very conservative way to approach stormwater management, but we did go through that exercise and revise the hydrology analysis, of which you have a copy of, and it basically shows that there's, that this site has been sized accordingly. Item number three, they pointed out, McCarty Engineering pointed out that they would like, instead of a five to 20-hour time here, to a one to 24-hour time span. We've provided that in the revised drainage analysis. Item number four, the hydrocat model just was mislabeled, and we have, in the post-construction, hydrocat model has been revised to, to basically reference the one and the three sub-cashment areas properly. Item number five, the drop inlet, this was sort of a second, second most important item. The drop inlet was modeled as a pond, as suggested by McCarty Engineering, and as you look at that drop inlet as a pond, there still is a foot of additional storage above the 100-year storm event, and that is shown in the revised drainage analysis. Item six is stormwater, the water quality and infiltration rate of 2.41 inches per hour was utilized, and we had incorrectly checked a different box on the stormwater checklist, and we, we revised that checklist and included it in the revised drainage analysis. And lastly, the, McCarty had pointed out that TSS worksheet still meets the 80% removal without the sediment forebay, so what we did was we took the sediment forebay out of the TSS calculations and provided that in the, in the revised hydrology analysis. Three other items that came up in regard to the last hearing, we just, and in conjunction with conservation hearings, we just want to make the plan of board aware of it, that the groundwater protection overlay district lines have been removed as this site was in, this overlay district was inadvertently put on the plans. We had come to the, the knowledge that this particular part of town is not in that groundwater protection overlay district, so we removed those lines. We also added in the wood road temporary and now abandoned easement that was discussed at length to the plan set, just for reference, and we, we labeled those as abandoned, but wanted to show them where their location was. And the third most significant item was that two new waivers were added to the waiver request sheet, and I'm going to kind of go to those now. Those two waivers were brought up by Mr. McIntyre at the last hearing. Those two new waivers are that the utilities, such as telephone, cable, and electric lines are installed underground. We are requesting that those utilities be continued above ground and that new utility poles be installed along the new right of way. The fourth waiver is that the driveways, as mentioned before, shall be paved from the edge of the new roadway to the lot line. The McIntyers with their proposed or future use feel as if there'll be less impact to the, to the environment and to the, to the street if that roadway can be of a compacted gravel surface. And I just want to go to the subdivision plans to kind of show you where we were talking about those, those changes. That, that paved area that we just referenced in waiver request number four would be in this location here. We're proposing that that be just compacted gravel, so that it be continuous from the edge of the pavement to the, to the site, all be compacted gravel, and that all of the utility poles that go from Davis Street all the way back to the end of the cul-de-sac, which is only about 100 feet long, be above ground. And for the most part, the, the set itself remains the exact same. There's no structural differences throughout the, throughout the project. We just want to mention to the, to the board that we did receive comments also from the Conservation Commission and have made some adjustments in that they asked for some additional wetland flagging be done behind the existing building in this location, and that we showed the off-site wetland area across the street and some additional sediment erosion controls be placed along Route 16, so as to prevent any erosion and sediment going into the street layout, which we've added. I think that sort of highlights where we've been since the last meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Board, any?
Just through the chair. I got a question regarding waiver three. The purpose of going overhead is, what's the purpose of going overhead versus the underground? The use of the industrial park and stuff like that, is it going to be easier for a national grid to maintain if there's higher output of, you know, facilities going in there that need additional power?
I'll answer that one. It's because. Sorry, Tom McIntyre, the applicant. Primarily, it's because we're planning on putting a lot of solar on the site, and it's intended to connect to a ground solar project, and solar typically prefers.
The overhead?
Overhead.
The overhead, okay.
So that's the reason for that waiver. And just to add to the fourth waiver, the gravel, it's also in part because we're crossing the pipeline, and we think that, you know, we want to make sure we're actually where we want to be before we ever try to pave that on the extension. We don't want to have to do that twice dealing with the gas company, is the reason for the gravel waiver.
Thank you. That's fair.
I can't remember, what do you have for lighting on the site?
Proposed.
Kick that one back to Mark, I don't know about that one.
What's the proposed lighting on the site and on the road?
Oh, I should add.
The site? Yep, we have not asked for any waivers for the required lighting.
So you're just going by the.
If it's the board's direction to put a light at the end of the cul-de-sac, we'd be more than happy to do so. Again, it's only about an 100-foot long stretch. We know that as the subdivision gets built out, each of the individual lots will have their own building-mounted lights.
Okay. Just through the chair, I would just recommend, wasn't one at the intersection is going to be key?
Definitely one there, yeah.
And then, if you're going to go overhead, I think it just can be reviewed.
Yeah, if you're going to go overhead, then, yeah. How it gets developed, as it gets developed, you can put the lighting in, I'm just curious.
Tom, did you have something you want to?
Nope, I was just going to add that each site, as it gets available, will have its own site plan, this is just really for the roadway.
Matt, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am late to the party here, and I apologize, so you guys have had many hearings without me. But I do, but, okay, all right.
Luminary and then.
Okay, so some general questions. Then, thank you, Mr. Mark, for bringing this up. I didn't see a photometric plan or any sort of lighting plan added to this. I know you don't have your tenants yet for this site, and those could change. Would you be submitting individual site plan proposals when those are ready to be developed at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Each lot will do its own site plan, and I can't speak for lots 1 through 5, or 7 or 8, because those won't be owned by me.
Understood.
They're out of my control, so.
Understood. So, and that kind of segues into my next question, which would have been landscaping, so.
I know. I think we may have requested a waiver for the trees, because, I mean, it will be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but it will be naturally wooded until each site is developed.
Yeah, it's the roadway trees that we're going to burn without that.
Then, through the chair again, as far as clearing goes, and I'm trying to avoid a clear-cutting of properties as much as possible. So as far as clearing for this project goes, we're just talking about clearing in order to construct the roadway. And then, once individual lots come in, then you'd be revisiting that through site plan review.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, the procedural.
First of all, I need your name and address, and second of all, I'm not opening up to public comment just yet.
Thank you, so.
If you can just hold on? Thank you.
Thank you. So the only other thing I wanted to mention was procedurally, so we still have a follow-up review to do with the peer review consultant on the changes, and we're just waiting to get that back. I would anticipate we can get that pretty soon in advance of the next hearing, so that's all.
Excellent. Board, any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing, anyone in the audience with a question or a comment? I know there's someone.
Yes, sir.
Name an address before you start, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I think you had answered. Jeremy Flansburgh, 53 Monroe Street, 42 Monroe Street, 46 Monroe Street, 15, 16.
Good enough.
Yep.
And 70 Davis Street. I'm right near the center right here around this particular project, and my question, sir, is so, is this a simple dirt road?
Jeremy, can I interrupt you for a second? Jeremy? Your cellphone is breaking up very bad. I don't know if you can call back from a landline, or if you're on a landline?
Take us, take you off speaker if it's on speaker.
Your audio is not good at all.
We're starting to lose you.
Yeah, you're not coming in well.
All I heard was dirt road.
Yeah, same here.
I'll try that, I'll call back in, thank you.
All right.
Now we hear you, though.
Sounded great.
It got better, but.
That was the best it sounded. I don't know what he did, but it's.
Right at the end, it came unclear, I don't know what that was. Anyone else in the audience with a question, comment, concern with this project?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Larry McCardy, Engineering?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. So I, we did look at Mr. Allen's updated plan set and hydrocat model, and we are in agreement that the updated plans and model address all of our comments, so we'll issue an updated memo for you guys.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so we'll just wait for an updated memo from him.
Jeremy comes back.
Yeah.
So would you, Matt, would you be able to draft a decision for our next meeting?
I can do that.
For this, if it meets everything that we meet?
Draft decision, sure.
A draft decision, yeah, and we usually ask for the draft decision to be shared with the applicant, so there's no disconnects.
Sure.
Do we want to wait until?
Well, after.
We get the memo and everything first?
If it's as simple as that, I don't mind, and I could start a draft, absolutely.
Sure. That's good. That way they can be shared with the applicant and so that though. And if it's ready for the 18th, if we are all in sign, then we could.
I apologize, I do have another question.
All right.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I know we don't have a tech review process set up yet, where we solicit comments from police, fire, water, sewer, et cetera. As any of our town professionals reviewed site distance, traffic, safety, anything like that, I just care if you reach out to police or fire and make sure they have emergency vehicle access and such.
I know generally, they, when an application would get sent in, I think Maria would send it out to the department heads.
Right.
And we would get emails back with any questions, comments, concerns, or a letter, if there was a concern, it'd be a letter.
Sure.
I don't know if we're still doing that.
I don't know if it happens, to be honest with you, that's why I was asking.
We did have a tech review meeting.
Thank you.
Early on at the preliminary phase.
Thank you. Excellent, okay, thank you.
Is there a recorded document of that?
They're informal.
Yeah, I wonder if maybe a quick email, any issues with this project, does we have it?
Accomplish that at the same time, sure.
Yeah.
Reach out to departments, and if they have any comments or concerns with the project.
Okay.
Then it's documented, we reach out to them and.
I'll take it. Okay.
Bob and Eric, economic development, we did have a peer review. I can get you an email with the exact date and time, and who attended, and I could possibly recall some of the items we discussed. We've only been taking minutes the last two tech reviews. This was prior to that, where there was no minute taken there.
Comments are usually added to the application.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so. Mr. Flansburgh.
So we have something. Okay.
That answers my question.
Yeah.
I know all those work, and those departments will put their opinions out there.
Oh, yeah.
So that the applicants can make those adjustments, so I'm happy to hear that that happened.
I know they addressed site review, I mean, site.
I remember sight line.
Emergency vehicle access, utilities, et cetera. Okay, great.
Thank you, Bob.
Comments?
Jeremy, are you on?
I am, sir. Did you hear me better now, sir?
Yeah, I can hear you better, let's hopefully it stays that way. So far, so good.
Thank you. I have just a couple of comments. So basically, this is going to be a dirt road with telephone poles going deep into the woods. And quite frankly, I don't think this is very good for the neighborhood yet. I'm worried about stuff, I'm worried about light, I'm worried about a lot of stuff, because apparently, just from the pop shop across the street, all I see is my, my, my window is light all night long. I hope everybody in this board understands that. I, all I see is pop shop light. Now, back to what we're dealing with. So now we're going to have a dirt road with all this stuff, with telephone poles that doesn't have an access or right-of-way to the back property. Where do we fear with the assessment of the back property? Because the board allows Mr. Pedro to build on the right-of-way that would have had no problems to get to what we're up against today.
All right, Jeremy, I'm going to.
Pause.
Jeremy, I'm going to pause you. You have a couple of questions, I just want to make sure everything gets covered, so I'm just going to pause you right there. All right, any response?
Mark's on.
Mark, any response with the road?
Yeah, so if I could, Mr. Chairman, it's not going to be a dirt road, it's going to be a paved road. The one waiver we request is just simply the first 50 feet of Mr. McIntyre's new lot be gravel, which would be consistent with the gravel access over the existing gas easement, so it's not going to be a dirt road.
Just through the chair, Mark, that access point allows that access into that back parcel, correct?
Correct.
So that resolves any, the past easement issue, that now you've got a new point of access into that back parcel?
Yes, so I think we may clear up something here, I'll just kind of erase the screen here. The, what Mr. Flansburgh has been referring to is that there was a prior easement in this location called Wood Road that the Taylors used to get back to the property out in this location here, so that was part of the discussion at the last meeting, and we've added that location, that approximate location of what they used to call Wood Road, but that easement has been abandoned, so we just wanted to show that to the board for clarity and sort of closing the circle to the last meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Can I add some comments to that?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor has been asking me since I built this house 21 years ago, and Mr. Taylor works for my father as a plumber, and all he needed was approximately, I think it was about 3 feet of my property, so he could have utilized Wood Road. But Mr. Taylor and Mr. Pedro didn't get along, so Mr. Pedro built his right-of-way, well, built his building on the right-of-way in spite of Mr. Taylor. So now, Mr. Taylor's not going to go toward my house, he's going to go on the other side, but there is no right-of-way. The right-of-way are completely dead. There ain't no more.
Exactly.
There's not the interesting documentation from right there in the corner where Wood Road would have been if Mr. Pedro had built his building on. So I think this is kind of, the subdivision is a, quite frankly, I think this is being, they're throwing the wall over your eyes, planning board. It's, it's. It's still giving you that this is just for this cul-de-sac. This has nothing to do with this cul-de-sac. This has to do with all the back property for Mr. Taylor.
That's your comment, Jeremy?
And I don't think legally this could be done. Thank you.
Okay.
That's your comment, Jeremy? All right, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you for your comment and your time. Anyone else online or in the audience with comments or questions or concerns?
Did he have a second question?
No.
Did he have a second question or?
No.
No, no.
No, he had a couple of questions, then he had a comment.
Okay, the dirt road was the one, and then the easement was the other, and I think Mark's addressed the easement issue.
Nobody else?
And the dirt road is going to be a paved road, so there's no issue there.
Yeah.
And I think this actually sets it up better to access that back property.
Yeah, it's actually a clear cut.
Make it easier.
Access point.
All right, I'm good.
Anything else we need to check off our list with this, Matt?
This is checking on the requirement to make sure that there is an easement extended off of dead-end streets to access backland, and even though it's not in our regulations, it is in a lot of other communities.
Correct.
I think it's important to use this sort of avenue in order to access backlands that don't have frontage and any landlocked, so I think, I actually support items like.
It is in our regs.
I thought it was in our regulation.
All right, and I'm kind of looking for that.
We're requiring it anyway, and you're fulfilling that.
He's fulfilling it. It's usually, just, so in our regs, what it states is it's just a landlocked parcel.
Yeah.
You shall grant the easement to the landlocked parcel as part of the development and stuff like that, and that.
We used to deed and fee to.
I'm an advocate of that, so.
Yeah, and we, I think Hawk Hill was one of the ones that we've actually brought it up in that situation as well.
Okay.
So lots all have frontage too, once the.
Yes, correct, of course. Let's see about the other land or other privately-owned land behind it, that, I believe that driveway that you're showing that's going to be dirt gravel is also going to be considered an access easement and recorded as such.
It's essentially cross-easements for lots 5 and 6 to those properties.
Excellent, thank you.
Share driveway almost.
Okay. Excellent.
So we'll get the comments back, and we can continue.
Comments back, draft decision.
Should be good for the next meeting, I assume.
Draft a decision.
Have them by the next meeting.
Maybe we could sign the final decision.
Be able to act on it then, pick a final vote.
Very well. Yeah, if we can get the draft straightened up between the lines.
Motion to continue the hearing until.
Do you want to be on the next meeting or?
Yep, 18.
Yeah, what, is there an open time slot?
7:30 open.
7:30? All right, 7:30. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Peter Michael Business Park, 100 Davis Street, to November 18th at 7:30.
Second.
Motion by, made by Les, second by Aaron, y'all is in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll finish this next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Have a good night.
For sure.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, the only thing we have, signed vouchers, but then ahead of that was number two, ASD Walmsley Solar, 269 Walmsley Road, SPR-181002, decommission fund agreement, possible votes. Leave us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it's okay, I'd like to invite Ken Brazier to the table, because there's plenty for us to discuss. We did have a site walk on property with our peer review consultant on Thursday last week. We are anticipating a review from our consultant, McCarty Engineering. That has not come in today, however, through our conversations with the applicant who is here, Lawrence Cook should be on Zoom, can actually discuss some of the details of that walk, in addition to some of the work that they had done at the property, just given some verbal comments from our peer review engineer, they're shown to be very proactive with this, to make sure that this drainage issue is addressed. So I'd kind of request through the chair that we kind of open it up to Mr. Cook to provide his update, and if Commissioner also has some questions or comments or feedback at the board's request.
Ken, you want to start, or you want to? All right, Ken, you want to start or you want to... I'll go first. You want to start or you want to go?
I'll let Mr. Cook have his say on where they are at on the process.
All right, Mr. Cook?
Good evening all. So yes, we had the sidewalk last week with several people from the town and the peer reviewing the third-party engineer. We obviously talked through the additional measures that have been done on site with the nearly mile of additional erosion controls have been placed, per the engineer's recommendations throughout the site to slow the passage of water across the site. We also saw that the vegetation was sprouting. And there's been, since that site visit, there's been some top up seeding in some of the bare spots that were noted, plus the engineer made a couple of recommendations on the level spreaders, which have also been taken on board and installed as well. So yeah, we think we're as prepared as we can be, and as demonstrated by the fact that we had a little over two inches of rain earlier on in the week and no apparent issues beyond that.
Thank you. Ken?
I did take a ride up to the site, not into the solar park, but I did go to Shore Road today. It does seem as though the water coming down through the forested area has lessened. I would probably have to attribute it to, you know, a bigger bottom on that first retention bond. Adding those additions to the level spread has probably helped it out also. One question I do have is, was the engineer looking at anything more from TRC with regards to adding another outlet or anything on those retention areas?
No, he is of the opinion that the design is adequate. And yeah, I mean, obviously that'll be down to the peer reviewer, whether he has any additional measures. But at the moment, our engineer is not confirmed that it really won't make a huge amount of difference to things.
I don't know that I really have any more questions with regards to it. We did do the sidewalk up there. We saw what was going on with the work going on up there. The vegetation is starting to take, although be it pretty sparse at the bottom side, you still have some erosion channels that are happening. But I see you have the waters in place. At the end of the day, the biggest concern, like we've been saying around the log, is to mitigate the water flow coming down and doing potential damage to Shore Road. So it appears as though it's starting to take hold and starting to get in a better position with it.
Matt?
Thank you.
Just one thing to add as well.
Sure.
That lower part was seeded later than the stuff at the top of the hill. That is obviously much thicker. The seeding at the bottom of the hill is primarily the wildflower stuff. The grass that's growing is an annual winter ride, so that will keep growing even if the temperatures start to dip down a little bit as well. So just bear that in mind, that that will still keep going till well into November. Understood.
Very good.
Matt?
So there's actually two things here, and I don't want to leave one of these things out. But Eve Tapper is also here on our Zoom call. And there was an item we were waiting on, which was a modification to, or a mandatory letter agreement to the decommissioning fund agreement. And we did get our feedback from our council today, and it was circulated right around 2:00 this afternoon. But curious if the proponent had able to review that and if they had accepted any of those modifications. I believe there's a gentleman here that may be able to speak on that.
Yeah, Keegan will answer that.
Yes, Keegan Austin, Lab Energy. Yeah, we were able to get a review back and sent that over a little bit earlier, kind of during the meeting, the initial part of the meeting. So I have the presumption that you will have to take that back to your attorney for his review and, you know, we'll have at least another turn of it before we can get to finalization.
Okay.
I don't think we've got any major disagreements, so it's just finalizing the wording.
Right. Mr. Chair, can I ask, can you tell, can you explain what was the issue? What issues do you have?
Your name and address.
Just, you're Eve Tapper.
Sorry, I'm Eve Tapper. I'm not sure what my title is anymore. I'm still some staff for the Community Development Department of the Town of Douglas. And I'm trying to follow up on the legal law, the letter, the legal letter.
Thank you.
Sorry. And so I'm just curious as to what the issues are. So our legal counsel went through it and made some changes as to the process of how we use the money from the decommissioning fund for erosion mitigation and how the applicant or the owner purses that money so that at the end of the life of the solar park, we still have the same amount of money that we need to decommission it. And I don't know if there's a quick answer or, again, I didn't look at my email in the middle of the meeting, but we're going to have to send it back to town council just to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I understand that there's some deadlines that the applicant is up against here, and one of them being incredibly important, that being a deadline to go online as part of the SMART program. And that deadline takes place prior to our next meeting. So I think it would be for the board to consider a couple of motions or conditional motions in order to put things in place so that town staff could handle these items outside of the public hearing realm with the planning board's support and endorsement. One of those items being this letter that Ms. Tapper is talking about, for the board to conditionally support the changes pending agreement from both parties, especially town council and their council as well. And if that were to be finalized outside of the public hearing and signed by both parties at the planning board, would agree to that. The other item, if you want...
Sorry, excuse me.
Sure.
Eve Tapper again. The letter has to actually be signed by the chair of the planning. That's what, that's who signed the original agreement, I think. Ernie signed the original agreement. So this one would be signed by the planning board chair. I don't know. I agree with your process. I just want to make sure that the planning board is clear that one of their members would have to sign it. And whether or not that means you need a vote or not, I don't know.
We can...
I believe the board can designate it first.
To sign, which we can make designate Jake since he's here to sign on behalf of the board. So I think the other concern was that we talked about the road bond.
Yeah.
To include Shore Road.
Yeah, I just keep our motions separate for now. I wanted to see if there was a motion in that regard for the board to endorse it once both parties of council have agreed on the language.
Looks like Eve has her hand up first.
Yeah, sorry. So, Mr. Chair, can I address Les's question?
Sorry.
So at the last meeting, which I don't believe you were at, we went, I asked the board if you wanted to include other roads, that are private roads and not town roads. And the consensus of the board at the time was that we were only going to include Walam Lake Road, which is a town-owned road in that agreement.
Okay.
Correct.
So I don't, I understand the time before that, we did talk about adding the other roads, and then the board changed their mind. Talked about it in more detail.
Okay.
Yeah, no other roads would be included.
All right, fair enough.
If I could just add, that Walam Lake Road is the only named road, but the other roads would be picked up in the wording to do with the stormwater mitigation and erosion. So it's not just the road, in that sense, that any area that is having an issue with stormwater or erosion that is originating from our site. So if the town still didn't want to include private roads, because that would be an issue, those are picked up indirectly through that additional wording.
Okay.
So I have no problem with the...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Town people, attorney, and their engineers, everything working outside the meeting, get it done.
Yeah, that's standard. I don't think this is any major, if you need a motion for me to, all right, I'll make the motion to allow Jake to sign on behalf of the board for Walam Lake, ASW Walam Lake Solars. Vice Chair.
I don't know when Tracy's going to be back.
Correct. Acting Chair, decommissioning agreement.
Once it's finalized.
Once it's finalized by town council and staff.
Second by Les, second by Ernie. All is in favor?
Aye.
And if you need me to get it signed?
He just got surgery done.
Just get it...
He just had surgery done.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the second motion we'd be looking for is establishing a performance bond for this stormwater management issue that we're waiting for a peer review on. So I have some draft language here, and I'll just peel it off as a motion. And if any of the board members like it, you can give me a so moved. So I was kind of working on this today. So we're looking for, similar to a motion to establish and execute a performance bond agreement between AMF Solar and the Town of Douglas for the completion of stormwater management engineering and continued maintenance thereof on property located at 269 Walam Lake Road. The bond amount is to be determined by Graves Engineering and approved by the town administrator, with an additional contingency to be determined by this board here this evening. So I guess all I'm looking for from the board is a motion so moved, and then add a percent contingency to the bond that the board prefers if they prefer contingency at all. I recommend administratively that it be a 20% contingency.
Yeah, I think I was thinking 25 or 30.
Also curious if Mr. Cook agrees with the language of the motion.
Yeah, obviously difficult without seeing the number of graves come up, but if that is a fair and reasonable rate, then yeah, I agree with the motion that 120 or 125% bond would be suitable.
Okay, so we'll do the 125%. And then so move with the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
So Les made it, the second?
Oh, you made it. I'll second it then.
All right, motion made by Les, second by Ernie. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
If that's it?
So, can I start with this?
Anybody in the audience?
All right.
Good job.
I don't have anything else at this point, other than we just want to make sure we have the issue with the COC. This one's going to have to be in place before that release is not what the intent is.
Through the chair, to Mr. Cook. So if we get our peer review amount back, as our consultant said, early to mid next week, I understand you have a COC deadline of Friday of next week. This is the language for bond, this is the language for bond, but it's also possible for you guys to begin the work and complete it prior to posting said bond. So just curious what your timetable would be if you were to get this peer review with an amount by Tuesday or Wednesday next week. What would be the course of action?
So it would all depend on whether we need to, how much new wording we need to draft, whether it's a standard thing that's already been agreed, or whether we could extend the decommissioning bond, seeing as it includes the stormwater to specifically include it. That could be the quickest. It wouldn't take us very long to post that on. I think the time would be how it's formalized.
Understood.
But I see no reason why we couldn't make that decision now. So, or certainly while we're waiting for the peer review, if we can get the wording agreed, then just have the amount dropped in at a later date.
Sure. That sounds good. Would your team be, through the chair, would your team be interested in drafting that language in advance prior to receipt of the review? Talking about a bond document.
I mean, does the board or does the town have a standard board, sorry, standard bond wording or document that you'd use? Maybe the DPW has one.
I'll try to find one. I just figured I'd ask you first.
Yeah, if we have language, we can supply, but if the town has one that they already come up with, I think we should do that.
Understood. Okay, very well.
Sounds good. So is this one all set to sign, or is there something you need to add or do?
There'll be an amendment to that.
Oh, that's the...
Yeah, there'll be amendment to that. And that's the one you'd come in to the office once it's ready. That's the first motion we did.
All right, so that was the one.
That was it, yes. I don't believe there's anything else unless Mr. Cook had any questions, comments.
Mr. Cook, anything else? All right.
Thank you.
You have stuff to be signed that's going around?
That's going around. We have to sign that Mylar.
Sign the Mylar, nothing else on the agenda.
There is one item in signature, oh, no. The town minister is going to sign that item, Jen, that we had in the packet. It was a peer review amount. No, it was a sidewalk piece, but Matt Wojcicki is going to sign that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. So that's not in there anymore. So it's just signing our Mylars. And I...
All right, that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the October 28th planning board.
Motion made by Les.
Second.
Second by Mike G. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Ernie?
Ernie.
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Ernie, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.